Welcome to the March tenth regular meeting of the Board of Education. Thank you for joining us tonight. My name is Anupam Chugsidhu and today is a big day and we're excited about getting the results of our bond proposal. So for everyone that was involved in any way whatsoever with this initiative, thank you. And we had so many people involved, too many to name at this point, but I really want to thank everyone for being involved with this really, really big initiative. So for now, I'd like to have my board members introduce themselves, starting on the left.
Hi, good evening. My name is John Lazarz. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Good evening, Patty McCoy. Happy Voting Day.
Good evening, Patrick Keough. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Good evening, Doug Brooks. Thanks for coming out.
Good evening, I'm Kate Borninski. Thanks for coming.
Ms. Merritt, would you like to introduce your staff, please?
Good evening and welcome. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson, and thank her for taking the minutes this evening. Also Charlie Jones, the man behind the scenes who tapes our videos, our meetings, so that those that cannot be here have the opportunity to see the business of the board. I'd like to ask the remaining members of the staff to introduce themselves, beginning with Mr. Brandon.
Good evening. Nick Brandon, Executive Director of Communications and Marketing. Welcome.
Hi, Debbie Pios, Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Welcome, Liz Vartanian-Gibbs, Human Resources.
Hello, Kurt Tiskowitz, Executive Director of Student Services.
Welcome, Beth Rail, Chief Academic Officer. Glad you're here tonight.
Good evening, Heather Fitchpatrick, President, Education Association.
Thank you. At this point, Devin, could you help us lead the Pledge of Allegiance?
We just see the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're moving on to part A. I'm looking for a motion for the adoption of the agenda, approval of the consent agenda, action item number twenty dash zero three dash forty-four.
Madam President, I move that we adopt the agenda and approval of the consent agenda, action item two zero dash zero two dash forty. Okay. Twenty dash zero three dash forty-four.
I second it.
Thank you. Motion was made by Member Brooks and seconded by Member Lazarowitz for action item number twenty dash zero three dash forty-four. Ms. Merritt, would you please walk us through the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you. This evening, our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions. Since our last time together, we have a resolution for the new hire of Network and Data Security Administrator for your consideration. We have leaves and retirements, a tenure recommendation. We also have the approval of minutes from our regular meeting on February 25th, 2020, and out-of-country field trips this evening for your approval. Finally, we have first readings of policy zero one zero zero, definitions, bylaw zero one six seven point two, closed session, policy two two one zero, curriculum development, policy five two zero zero, attendance, and policy eight four zero zero, school safety information.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any pos? Thank you. Motion passes six zero for action item number twenty dash zero three dash forty-four.
Good evening. At this time, I would like to introduce everyone to Mr. Daniel Clancy. If you could come up, please. We are very fortunate because Daniel Clancy will be our new Network and Data Security Administrator. And he has worked in our district since 2017 as a computer technician, so he knows our district and he knows lots of things about the technology department. Before he was in our district, he worked as a network engineer, as well as a tech associate in IT support for a pharmacy company. He also has a degree in applied science with a focus in computer information systems. So Dan, welcome. We are so thankful that you are now going to take on this new role in our district. And at this time, we are going to have you come around and we're going to congratulate you. And for preventative measures and safety, we are going to do fist pumps. Congratulations. Thank you so much and welcome to your new position, Dan. Okay, next this evening, I would like to share with you that Lisa Baru, who is an English teacher at Plymouth High School, has announced her retirement. She will retire at the end of the school year and I would like to thank her for her 23 years in our school district. So thank you, Lisa, and congratulations. We also have one teacher who is going to be tenured this evening and her name is Megan St. Peter. Megan is not with us this evening. She's probably correcting papers, but she is from Liberty Middle School and she is a social studies teacher. And here's what James has shared about Megan. It is with great excitement and enthusiasm that I recommend Megan St. Peter for tenure. I have had the pleasure of meeting and working with Mrs. St. Peter at the very start of her teaching career as she was a student teacher at Central Middle School. It was very clear to me then that Megan possessed the passion, zeal, and excitement to be a middle school teacher. During Megan's time in Plymouth Canton Community Schools, in part of the Central Liberty Middle School team, she has continued to demonstrate her love for students and the love for social studies. Mrs. St. Peter's excitement only increased once I confirmed she would be teaching social studies again. Mrs. St. Peter certainly earned her stripes as she carried multiple preps in order to become a full-time teacher, as well as a coach. In addition to Mrs. St. Peter's commitment in and outside the classroom, she is very intentional in being reflective and seeking additional feedback from administration and colleagues to gain more insight or to simply talk through an idea or a concern. I really appreciate Mrs. St. Peter's willingness to do this as it says so much about her desire to continue to grow as an educator. I am very proud of Megan as she receives tenure tonight. And James says, "Thank you for being an awesome member on the team." So congratulations, Megan, for completing five successful years in our school district as a teacher and now you have been granted tenure.
Thank you. Normally, we would be moving on to part B, celebrating success, but Mary Kehrer could not be here, so we're going to postpone this for another two weeks because we think it's important for her to be present to receive this great honor. So we'll move on to Board Committee Reports, Part C, and starting with the President's Report. I am so excited to congratulate Member Borninski for being recognized by the Michigan Association of School Board. She's being recognized for her Level Two certification, along with a merit award for having completed all of the classes, a hundred-some hours. So this is a huge honor, so I would like to have everyone give her a big round of applause for this amazing moment. Kate, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. I appreciate your mentioning this tonight. It was my pleasure to do this because I think that board training is really important.
Yes. It's a lot of work, so kudos to Member Borninski for this level. Next, I would like to, again, thank everyone for their efforts for sharing the bond information and coordinating presentations across the community. We really talked about our needs, our future vision, as well as what we did with the last bond. In all of these discussions, I felt like it brought us together as a community. I know in some of my outings, I actually got to meet my former superintendent from one of the districts in which I worked, as well as a board member from that district. So as we're going out and about, there's so many connections that we're making, in addition to some of the old friends that you come across. But I want to particularly thank Superintendent Merritt and her team for actively being out there almost every night. They were willing to do any presentation at any time, share the information. And again, a big applause to you and my board colleagues for being out there. And I really want to thank Corinne Stamatacos and Judy Hart for leading the parent advocacy group. And they're not here yet, but I think they will join us a little bit later. Next, I'd like to just mention that Member McCoy and I attended the Park Players Play Angel Street last week, and I want to congratulate the entire cast and Mr. Byrd for an amazing performance. Member McCoy, would you like to share any few words of that?
I learned where we got the expression "gaslighting."
With such a small cast, it was amazing that they did a phenomenal job, all of the lines that they had to memorize for two hours. So I'm sorry that Aiden couldn't be here. I'd like to congratulate him personally. And a few other announcements. Congratulations to the Lightning Robotics Team, eight sixty-two, for winning their first competition of the year. And also, congratulations to Canton's Ben Stasiak for winning the Hometown Life Athlete of the Week. So those are the two things that were mentioned in the news. I know there's a whole lot that goes on, but that's just kind of something that picked up in my news feed. So with that, we will move on to item two, Student Performance and Achievement Committee SPA. We met last week and we had a really, really in-depth discussion about curriculum updates, as well as field trips. The K-12 Math Initiative, you'll hear more about a little bit later today, a really thorough job that was done by the curriculum team. And we also got to look at some of the social studies materials that the team reviewed because our social studies materials are so outdated, so I congratulate the team for reviewing and doing a really nice job with getting multiple perspectives on that. And there was a conversation about having a really unique opportunity for our kids with a Spanish Six course. So really excited about that because I don't think any school that I've been at offers Spanish Six. And there's a need for that, so we looked at all of that. Is there anything else, Beth, that I missed from that meeting?
And you'll see all of those at the next board meeting as first reads.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up is Policy Committee. Member McCoy?
We will be meeting in two weeks from tonight. We meet at 5:30. We meet in the superintendent's conference room, which is when you come in the front door. It is right next to her office. Everybody is welcome to attend.
Thank you. Finance and Operations, Member Keough?
We have not met since the last board meeting and our next meeting is Thursday, March 19th. That's next Thursday at 5:00 PM here in this room. We welcome everybody to attend.
Thank you.
And actually, I'm sorry, one other thing. We'll be reviewing the community suggestions for the budget process, which will then subsequently be reviewed in a board meeting. So if you want to have additional input in that process, again, we welcome you to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Education Excellence Foundation with Heather Fitchpatrick.
Good evening, board members and community watching on TV. I'd like to start by introducing myself. My name is Heather Fitchpatrick and I'd like to start by saying that I'm celebrating my 17th year as a teacher in the district. I'm finishing my third year as President of the Education Association and I'm starting my second year as Vice Chair of the EEF, which is why I'm here tonight to present that report. Gretchen wanted me to talk a little bit about our uncorked event. This is our 10th anniversary of our uncorked event and it is shaping up to be one of our best events yet. I'd like to take an opportunity to thank our presenting sponsor, Community Financial Credit Union, and all of the sponsors who have committed this year so far. There is still time to commit to a sponsorship, which includes event tickets, advertising in the program, and event signage. This year's event will include music by PCCS students, a silent auction that includes private wine tours and tastings, tickets to the DSO and Purple Rose Theaters, and a variety of popular baskets. You'll also see a return of our Waggons of Wine, 101 bottles of craft beer on the wall, and a very popular gift card pull where everyone is a winner. Thanks to our beverage partners, Bushes, guests will enjoy over 70 varieties of wine, 20 varieties of craft beer, and a strolling dinner made by local restaurants. We are excited to see the return of some of our past food sponsorships, including Carl's Cabin, Fiama, Green Dot Stables, and we are looking forward to welcoming some new partners, Olga's Kitchen, Ironwood Grill here in downtown, and the very popular Luca Pastry. Tickets will be available next week on our website, which is eefforkids, that would be e-e-f-f-o-r-k-i-d-s dot org, and later this month at all Bushes locations. The event will be Friday, April 24th, at Fox Hills. And anyone interested in sponsorship opportunities or in donating a silent auction item are encouraged to contact Gretchen Ward at six seven four zero five six one, or visiting eefforkids.org. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for that update. We are now moving on to School Improvement Plan Highlights with Plymouth High School.
Yep, and so we'd like to welcome Principal Sheri Steckel and her team, who will share with you the highlights from Plymouth.
Hello, good evening. My name is Sheri Steckel. I'm the principal at Plymouth High School and I would love to introduce members that are here with me. I have our administrative team, Ted Youngless. I have Amy Wiliker-Brown and I have Danielle Ramos that are here to present as well. So come on up, you don't have to be so far away. Come on up. I have the clickers right here. Got it. Thanks. Okay, so go ahead and getting started, we have... So we have five goals that are centered on school improvement. Our first four goals, right there, we have strategies and activities that are going to support social studies, math, English, and science that are predominantly focused on curriculum revision, training staff, and effective instructional strategies, and of course utilizing our instructional coaches this year. Tonight, we are super excited to focus on the fifth goal and highlight some of the actual items that we have related around culture and climate in the building and social emotional development. So that's where we're going to start. We have three main focus areas under that goal, first of which is student agency, the second one is social emotional learning and support, and then the third one is relationship and student connectedness. Each of the APs are going to highlight one of those. So for the very first one, I'm going to turn it over to Ted now that I have the clicker. Working, there you go.
So yeah, so the first thing that we looked at was student agency and I guess the first question is, what is student agency? What does that mean? So student agency refers to a learning through activities that are meaningful and relevant to learners, driven by their interests and often self-initiated, with appropriate guidance from teachers. To put it simply, student agency gives students voice and often choice in how they learn. So that's what it is, but what does it look like? So if we're giving students a voice in what they're learning, what does that look like at Plymouth High School? Sorry. So first we wanted to look at, so why is this important to us? So we go back and we look at the K-12 insight from a while back and we notice that there is definitely a need for improvement here. Forty-four percent of our students said that their classes are interesting. Only 30% of our students say, "My classes let me be creative." We need to improve those numbers. We need to give students more advocacy. We need to let students take more of an active role in their education. Relevance, 22% say that they see how what they're learning in school relates to the outside world. That's really what we're here for. We're here to teach them what we're doing is supposed to relate to what they're learning in the outside world. So this advocacy part is really, really important to us. So that's what it is. Again, what does it look like in our schools? We picked a few examples here through choice reading, capstone projects, independent studies, club projects, Genius Hour, and classroom experiences. And then we took a few pictures of those, of what they look like in the classroom. So choice reading in our language arts class, several times a week in language arts classes, students are allowed to bring in their own reading. And they'll read from anywhere from 10 to 20 minutes a few days every week, their choice of what they want to read. The students absolutely love it. It is fueling their interest in reading. Capstone projects, through like our STEM project, IB, things like that. I went over to the STEM lab and saw some students working on a capstone project that absolutely blew me away. We have students in our school right now who are creating a brake system for a car that will never, ever break down. It works completely on magnetics. And they showed me how it works. Actually, got the wheel running, they put the magnet on it, and sure enough, the wheel comes to a complete stop. They said it will never, it'll never wear out, it'll never break down. I couldn't believe that high school students were able to do something like that. Independent study. I'm going to give my son as an example. He will probably die a little bit inside if he knew I was telling this story. But my son... My son suffers from depression and anxiety, debilitating. Hated school, did not see any value in school, did not want to be a part of school. And this year, we gave him an independent study class where he works with our cognitively impaired students. It has saved my son. He now wants to go to college. He wants to be a special ed teacher. A year ago, that never, ever would have happened. And I apologize, I did not expect that to happen. Genius Hour, some of our language arts teachers allow their students an hour a week to create whatever they want. It could be their topic of whatever they chose. I interviewed a young lady who wanted to get better at photography and she showed me all these excellent examples of how she improved in photography, not only through the classes that she was taking here, but things that she was teaching herself on her own. And one of the storyboards up there shows some of the pictures that she took, amazing things that our kids are able to do if we allow them the opportunity to take ownership of their own learning. And these are, we interviewed some of the students, these are just some of the things that they said about choice reading, capstones, and Genius Hour, how much they liked it, how much it excited them, how much they look forward to it in their school day. And I'm now going to turn it over to Ms. Wiliker-Brown, who's going to talk about social emotional learning and support.
Okay, so I know you're all reading ahead on the slide and some of these numbers can look a little disconcerting, so I just want to give a little context. Obviously, we are all aware that social and emotional needs are on the rise for our students and school is a place where we can provide really well for a lot of these things, but we're seeing the needs increase and we're, you know, working hard to meet those needs. So right now, we're on track to see a total of 18,000 check-ins in counseling for the 1920 school year. That's up from 7,500 total check-ins in the 1819 school year. So that's a significant increase and this is where the context comes in. I don't think that this is just, there is an uptick in student needs, but I think the counselors are working really hard to be available, to connect with the students, and to make sure that they understand what resources are there for them. And students are seeking out academic and social emotional support in the counseling offices. In the next slide, I'll tell you about some other programs that were running that I think is helping strengthen the relationship between students and their counselors, but it's a significant increase. Another sort of troubling significant increase is the emergency interventions and hospitalizations. The number 109 is actually outdated now. We're up to 120 crisis interventions or hospitalizations so far for the 2019-20 school year at our four high schools. This is up from approximately 75 by this time of year in the 1819 school year. So in response to the increase in needs, we worked on creating new crisis intervention forms and protocol. And this might sound a little boring, but I am talking to the school board, so you know that processes and protocols are really important. So we have new forms that allow fluid flow of information from, release of records to get good flow of information from school to outside agencies that provide support to our students so that the continuum of support is uninterrupted. We have a protocol for all school-based mental health professionals, K-12, to intervene in a crisis and to do the basic level of risk assessment that we need to know how to refer students for care outside of school when their needs sort of exceed what we can provide. And we've done preliminary professional development for all K-12 school-based mental health professionals on doing these preliminary evaluations, understanding how we document this, and understanding how to handle this in school. And we're still moving forward with this work. Every, all staff at the high school received this trauma, trauma professional development, led by Nicole Shammy, who's a psychologist and also teacher in growth programs at Plymouth High School. We have support groups. We're working with the University of Michigan. There's a clinical trial going on in a program called Trails. Has anyone heard of Trails? Yeah. So this is great for a couple of reasons. One is that it's written and geared for delivery in to students, the age of our students, within the school context. So it's really, really appropriate for our kids and it's really appropriate for our environment and it's psychoeducational, so it's just, it's not group therapy, it's just teaching kids about how their brains work and equipping them with tools to handle, to understand and handle some of their challenges. And it gives, it gives kids, especially with sort of subclinical levels of anxiety and depression, the tools they need to stay engaged in the academic environment more and to be more efficient with, you know, processing through their feelings so that they can, again, like take full advantage of what we have to offer. We are doing more onsite collaboration, like so on campus with Growth Works. We have some student groups meeting there. And we're also starting to develop policies for having outside professionals help students who are transitioning from a hospitalization back to school by being available onsite to those students during their initial transition. We're also are doing reentry meetings for students who have been out of school for disciplinary reasons or mental health reasons in a much more consistent way. Okay, that's all of that. And so now Danielle Ramos is going to talk to you about relationships and student connectedness.
Good evening. So from our climate survey from last year, what we had learned, as you can see there up on the board, is that students said, "I work in class with students other than my friends 53% of the time." So that's almost always and often is where these are falling under. I spend time with at least one friend at lunchtime, which is 86%, and I spend time with at least one friend from outside of school at 79%. Then we looked at the relationships with the adults and so you can see 69% of the students are feeling supported by their teachers and 59% are feeling supported by adults somewhere in that school. So our goal at Plymouth, our, the staff, the teachers, the secretaries, the administration, maintenance, people in the cafeteria, anybody that's there, our goal is to make sure, to see how we can increase those numbers. We want kids to want to come to school, not because they have to, but because they want to come to school. And it takes a whole village, as you guys know, for them to want to be there. And so I'm going to just show you a few things that we've picked out of what we're doing. So the first thing that we do as administrators is we send out introductory letters to our students that are on our caseload. So there's one there that happens to be Amy's. We all have one, but that's just introducing ourselves to the parents and to the students. So we had sent them across the board to all our kids, which is about, I don't know, 750 or so that are on our caseload, and just telling them a little bit about us and motivating them and getting them excited to be there at the school and also let them know that our door is always open for anything that they want to come to us about. The next thing that's on there are circles. So there's a bunch of things. So our staff have been trained with circles. We use circles, but there's a picture there. We have freshman meetings. So in the beginning of the year, the Plymouth High School administration, as well as, so the four of us here, as well as our dean and, did athletic director, did look at? So as well as our dean, Rochelle Vanover, we would go into the world history classrooms, so our ninth graders, and we would break them up into groups based off of our caseload. And so we would sit in them, there are probably about 10 to 15 kids on average, I don't know, maybe a little bit less than that, in each of our groups. And we would ask them questions like, "What do you like about the high school? What do you miss about middle school? What did you want to be when you grew up?" Just different things. I think there's five or six questions that we ask and it gets them to know us at a different level because a lot of times the assistant principals sometimes have a bad rep. And we don't want that. We make sure that they know that they can come to us and it's not just discipline. They're not going to just see us if they, you know, do something, but that they can come see us and that they have us there for the four years that they're there. Circles, we also see at the middle school visits in the spring, when we go off to the middle schools, we also do the same thing so that they can get, they get to know us even before those freshman circles. So we make sure that that's, that plays a big role in what we do. Also, in the summer programs, there's a lot of circles that are going on. And I see it when I evaluate teachers, I see it within the classroom. And I see it when I evaluate teachers, I see it within the classrooms. So there's a lot of teachers that I evaluate, especially on Fridays, where they take about ten, fifteen minutes, they group their class up. And then they just ask, like, two or three random questions, and the kids love it. Every time I ask the kids after the circle, "Do you like when Mr. Kimball does that?" And the kids are like, "Yeah," it just builds a community within our class. You just want to be there. So, just want to put that out there. The, a couple of other things that we do, I mean, I could be here forever, but a couple of other things. So, the You Matter cards, that is something that we do, teachers could do, anybody could do. I brought, you guys probably are familiar with these. And so on here, we write notes. So, on Mon, on Monday, I had wrote a note to a student and just let, letting them know how proud I am of him, of how much he has accomplished. And then I go and take that note, as well as everybody else, to that student and just to let them know that we are thinking of you and that we care. And we recognize the improvements that you're making or the effort you're putting in to whatever it may be. It doesn't have to just be school, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of social, emotional things going on with students. And so it's just letting them know, like, come on, you can do it, and building that confidence in them. Some other things on there is we have a watch list. And so that's where we look at students who have failing grades. So, kids with one or more Es, we will look at. And that is the time where we work with the counselors and that student to figure out different plans. And every kid is different, right? Every kid has something different going on in their lives, and there's a reason for that E. So, it could be something going on at home, it could be something where they're just not understanding what's going on in class. So how do we get the support for that student? And then we watch them and we meet with them regularly throughout the year to build that so that they can get rid of any of those Es and they can be more successful. And then, a big thing with us is just, just one-on-one meetings, always having your door open. Kids come into our offices for everything that you can think of, they come in there. But that's because they know it's a safe place. And I could say the same thing for the teachers across the building. So, you know, kids come into our offices all the time and they, they talk about, "Oh, I love this teacher because of this reason or that reason," and you see it. And kids go to their teachers and they go to their administrators. And we make, at a point at Plymouth, to build those relationships, so students have that connection with an adult.
Okay, so we kind of threw a lot at you, really quickly. Does anybody have any questions, or questions do you have for us?
Colleagues? Member Berninski?
I have a couple of questions. Thank you, first of all. You know, my students, my kids went to Plymouth, so I'm always thrilled to have you all here, because it's like my familiar faces. For Amy, I'm wondering, with this huge increase in counselor visits that you are seeing this year, could you give us an idea of what the ratio of counselors to students is?
It's in the four-twenty to four-fifty range, yeah.
Okay, and there are five counselors at each school?
There are five, five counselors at each building, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so about four-fifty per counselor, students?
Well, there's a range.
Roughly.
There's a range.
Because it's an alpha breakdown?
Yeah.
There's, there's about a range.
Yeah.
Okay. But over four, we could say over four hundred?
Certainly over four hundred for every, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And then I noticed, Danielle, you told us about your caseload, or the AP's caseload is about seven hundred and fifty students.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I think that gives us a picture. I'm also wondering, for Danielle again, the watch list. I'm, I'm glad that, and I'm sure you were before, but now it seems like it's more formalized, that you are watching these students. What I'm wondering is, what, what gets them on the watch list? Do they have to already have failed a class? Or is it like during the semester, somebody notices that they're not doing well and they are in danger of failing?
So, so it's both. So we start the year with, with a watch list, and some of those students, those main students who come to our watch list at the start of the year are students who have been reclassified. So they're already out of their original year of graduation cohort. So it's really important to us that we get those students back on track to graduate. So they are on the list. However, we do monitor, actually, grades. And attendance is also on the watch list, so we, we pull that every five weeks. And so every five weeks, we look and see, and so we'll run reports on grades and attendance. So you can enter then the watch list based on that as well.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That's a discussion you can have with the kids on, you know, looking at their grades.
You come up to the microphone.
Then that's a conversation you can have with the kids. When you pull up their attendance, pull up their grades, they're missing assignments, and develop a plan with them. And sometimes that initial plan doesn't work, and so it's then developing another, what's another plan then? Because this one's not working, and it's working with the counselors.
I just, I, I think it's great that, that you're doing both, because I really think that it's important to try to get a plan before a student has already failed a class, if possible. Thank you.
Okay, member Keighol?
Following up on Ms. Berninski's questions on that watch list. Is it only students that are going to not make their graduation cohort? Or is it students that are, that are failing in classes? I mean, I'm just trying to understand whether we're catching those students that may be doing well in one or two classes, but failing in three or four, or the other way around?
Right, so, so I can, so, no, it's both. So it's not just, so there's a lot, we have a lot of students, actually, the majority of our students on the watch list are in their original year of graduation cohort. Our goal is to keep them in that, in that original, you know, graduation cohort, and that, so that they don't get behind. It starts, that, that watch list will start with, with students who are reclassified, and then, and then we add each five weeks. And then what we do is we look at how they're trending as well. So we kind of code them as a red, yellow, or green. Green would be that they're trending up, maybe they got on there on the first five weeks because they had three Es. But if we pulled it again at the ten-week point, and they had one E, and we pulled it at the semester and they had zero, we would still leave them on the watch list, but we would code it as green.
Great.
And so then...
I see the sample that you've got, it's got a lot more red, which is maybe not so great. But along those lines, do we see students?
We always err at coding them, you know, it takes a lot, I'm going to be honest, to get them to green, because we always err in coding them in like the worst possible, I would say, category of red or yellow.
You want to make sure they have the right supports? Okay. And then another follow-up to Kate's question on the ratios. I know that we've made some investments in the last budget year process on supporting social and emotional learning. Did we make increases in the counseling staff, or what did we do at the high school level?
We did not.
So it's social workers. So are the social workers part of these interventions that are included in, in these numbers?
So, the social, what we have now at the high school is a one-full-time social worker at each building. And the, it's important to remember that social workers are required on many special education students' IPs, right? So the bulk of their time is spent in providing those services. When they have extra time, they're available to gen ed students as well. So that's the shift, is that there's some time available for general education support.
Okay, and so, but that's not a significant portion of their job, correct?
Well, I think that, that, I don't want to mischaracterize that, I don't, but I guess you have to kind of think of it, think of how their day looks. So if, if I'm, if I'm a social worker and I'm providing students, services to all these students with IPs, it's not like I can set aside Tuesday and say, "This will be my gen ed day," right? And because, right, and but they can't, and they can't really take over sort of a section of the counselor's work, like saying, "I'm going to do all social, emotional interventions," because that's not really appropriate. I mean, the students have better relationships with their counselors, right? So we can't really give them tasks from the counselors, we can't really give them students from the counselors, and we can't really take a, a chunk of time to like, you know, pull away from the counselors to give to the social workers. So there's, they often are providing like consultation support. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I can see that they're helping provide that additional support, especially where their unique skill sets can help the counselors. I just am looking at the workload here, and it's, it's more than doubled in terms of at least the, the number of check-ins that are happening.
Yeah.
Monica, as we go into the budget season, it'd be useful to have these same statistics for the other schools? And seeing whether we're seeing those same trends, because I would expect that, that might...
That's just high school.
Pardon?
She, she...
I just wonder, I apologize, I was asking if that was all of P's up those numbers.
Yeah, it's, it is all three schools.
Oh, that is all three schools? Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. So this is not just Plymouth?
Yes, that's all three schools, sorry.
Is that for all these statistics?
I happen to be the, the, the person in charge of the counseling department. So when I pulled all of my stuff, I was not just talking about Plymouth, I was talking about the park.
Okay, perfect, I may have missed that earlier.
Sorry.
That's for that clarification.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's very helpful. But I mean, I guess it still is, it, it's telling us a significant increase. And as we go into budget season, it's something that maybe we need to pay attention to, to make sure that we can still have those qualitative conversations in that process. And then, I'll, I'll let somebody else ask, I have one more question.
Anyone else?
Well, they got most of my questions. I was, I was going to ask about all these visits. I'm sorry, I was going to ask about all these visits, because there's like eighteen thousand visits and five counselors. Like, how could they even see all those people?
Fifteen.
Yeah. So, yeah. So that would be a third. But, so, in addition to these check-ins, what else are the counselors responsible for? Because I know they have a full day.
Yeah. So, the check-ins, as it's written there, is when students come to the counseling office, they check in on a computer. So the way that we track why students are there, they fill out a Google form and say, they're, they can choose social, emotional, academic, or other. So we're trying to sort of track what's going on with our kids. So, counselors are available for one-on-one conversations with students, but they're also in charge of schedules for each student. They write all of the letters of recommendation. They do individual meetings with students at every grade level on their caseload. They do group meetings with students at every level on their caseload. So, they are obviously providing all the information to students about scholarships and helping them to prepare parchment and get ready for what's next. They provide support in classrooms when teachers are wanting to incorporate, like, tier-one social, emotional learning for their students. They're doing the, the interventions when students are in crisis. They do things like Decision Day. Again, they're like, they're like our people who are focused on promoting student awareness of what comes after high school, you know? So, other events like Decision Day, coordinating with local universities to, you know, do onsite admissions and I'm leaving things out, there's a lot. And many of them are, they proctor testing, and many of them are involved in test coordination with college board. Yeah.
I feel like that's a full day.
Yeah.
All right. Others, before I go back to member Keighol? Okay, member Keighol?
So just a follow-up on that one. We've seen problems in the past, or sometimes where we've done a better job of reporting the data. Is, are we seeing eighteen thousand now, because you guys are doing a really good job of actually capturing those visits? Or, and that maybe the numbers you had previously were not well captured, or is it really that much of an increase?
We've been, we've been tracking for four years.
Okay.
So, I mean, and I'm happy to share information if the board would like to see more. I have information from the three schools at the park and Starkweather as well. On specifically the, not just the number of visits, but like what the reason balances are. And then on hospitalizations and crisis interventions too.
Okay, okay, so this is a true increase, it's not just a data problem?
Yeah, and we, we also have Zen Spaces in the counseling office, where students who often have such a thing written into their 504 plan can come to take a break when they're in sort of a mild crisis. So this is sort of a self-check-in, and we're recording that as well. So I'm sure that that's responsible for, like, some of the increase.
And then, and then my other question was, we had done a lot of work last year on the AFSP suicide awareness programs. How did those, how are those being rolled out as part of your, your processes and intervention? Are those part of the, the work that's happening? What are we doing district-wide as part of those, those programs?
So, the, I believe the last cohort of, is tomorrow. So the last cohort of staff to receive this training is tomorrow. It is a helpful and really great kind of introduction to suicide awareness and prevention. And it's great to have some common language shared amongst the staff, but it's really sort of like a foundational level, you know, introduction to the idea of awareness and prevention as the community's job.
And then, layering on that, we have a student mental health committee. Amy's on that committee with me and a number of our folks around the district. And we're trying to really look deeply at pre-K-12 social, emotional learning. What, what types of things can we do to continuously build upon that from both layers? Both a reactive and a proactive, more importantly, the proactive end of it. So we really start to embed that across our fabric and ensure that we can help support every young person.
Excellent, thank you very much. And then, the last thing I just wanted to say is, is I'm really excited about the reentry meetings and programs that you're doing. I, I think those are fantastic, and I'm really glad to hear about that work. Thank you.
Thanks, I, I really appreciate you saying that, because I feel like it's really important to all of us that we welcome those students back and that they know that they're, that they're supported and that, that we have an ability to talk with them, to see what they need. Because every, every kid needs something different. Some kids come and they, they don't know what they're going to say to their peers when they get in class. And other kids are more worried about their academics. And so, we schedule those meetings before they even leave us. Or we try to, it depends on the level of crisis. But, you know, those are, those are really powerful. And sometimes it's, it's just fifteen or twenty minutes, but it's a really powerful connection.
I think those can make a huge difference, so, thank you.
So I have a couple of things. One is, congratulations to the whole team for really focusing on the whole child. I know that, you know, we talk a lot about that at the state level. But you guys are actually doing the work and really looking at the social, emotional needs of kids. Because when, we know, once we meet those basic needs, their basic needs, then we can grow academically. So kudos to you for having those wraparound services coordinated at the high school. I've got a couple of questions with regard to the student agency page, where you have Genius Hour listed. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, so this, oh, do you want to talk, or me to talk? Okay, so this was really, so this was really a pilot. We had a couple of, of teachers who had a common planning for one year to try to, you know, it, it was really intentional to be able to get the time to have that. And so, so it's, at this point, it's really limited, but I think it's a great example of having student agency, about having something that's really relevant to a student, and you're being able to demonstrate that learning through, through choice, through voice. And so, they def, they have a series of skills and things that they need to, to demonstrate. Writing, there's a presentation, you know, component to it. But in terms of what kids do and what they're able to pick, those, those projects and those ideas, they're, they're kind of given that time to develop those. And, and, you know, that was really built into an, an English language arts class, so...
Do you see that growing with the pilot that you're running so far?
So I think, I mean, I, I don't know just yet. I mean, yeah, I can't, I, I can't say, I think it's a great example of what we want to see. I don't know that, that everything needs to be as structured. I think our hope is that every class in the classroom lessons is able to incorporate student agency. And within that, it doesn't, you know, we have capstone projects, and we have things that take a year. But at, the reality is, there's a lot of student agency that can be just within a classroom hour. So one of the class lessons that's up there, I think is, is a good example of, that was, you know, agency rate in, in a one-hour class period. It was, from my memory, that was a lesson on different festivals within a religion, and students were looking really for some of the commonalities. So they were really doing some of those evaluative, you know, and analytical skills, as they're looking at all of these seven different festivals. What do they have in common? What makes them different? And then how they presented and, and arranged that for the presentation, all within a thirty-minute class period. So that's the one on the upper right. That was a couple of groups that actually decided to present on like a poster board area, and how they did that, and how it made sense to them. And how they presented it was really, I think, a good example of seeing that student agency within a one-hour class period.
No, I love the options that you're presenting up there. And I've heard a lot of great things about Genius Hour nationally, so it's nice that you guys have incorporated that in there. I have a clarifying question with regard to the one-time, one-full-time social worker. Is that at the Plymouth High School or at the park?
Each building. One per building.
One per building, okay. Starkweather also has one full-time?
Yes.
Yes.
They have two half-time social workers, yeah.
Full-time FTE.
Full-time FTE, okay. Lastly, I just want to say thank you to Ted for your honesty and bravery, for sharing your story. I feel like we don't hear enough of that, because it's out there. And for you to share that, I hope more of us can talk openly about what we're all going through with our kids, and it's a real issue, so thank you for that.
Thank you, I didn't expect that.
That's okay, it's real, it's real. So thank you, great presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, we are moving on to citizens' comments, do we have any, none, okay? Then we are at administrative reports and recommendations, starting with the superintendent report.
As I lose the team on the way out the door, I just want to give them a shout-out. Plymouth High School, the cheer team came up as runner-ups in state, this is their first time going to states. And they came in second place, and so we're so completely proud of them, so I just want that team to go back and tell them our congratulations, because they rocked. And kind of just continuing on with your sentiments about the bond, what are we, less than seven minutes away? The polls will close and our community will decide on 2020 bond, and-
Still time to vote, yes.
Still time to vote, is all I'll say. And so with that, I just definitely want to thank everyone for their participation. When we talk about everyone, that is our village, and our village is inclusive of all of you as board members, our entire staff, our parents, our family, our business partners, our community, and our village really did come together. Regardless, I'll say in the famous words of Herman Boone, Coach Boone, regardless of what happens on the field, AKA the polls for us, you're all winners in my book. And so we will sleep well tonight, knowing that we put in the work to get out this information. We took the time to analyze the needs and what our kids deserve. And we are looking forward to the next couple of hours to let us know how it turns out. If we are not successful, then we keep working, because our kids deserve that. And we think about our year, this legacy of excellence, our theme, and we're putting, building the groundwork to make sure that our facilities, our programs really match the excellence that's going on within our classrooms. So just thank you again for everyone and your participation, and we'll find out really soon. I really also want to give a shout-out to our 881 the park, our kids are actually here this evening doing live coverage in a satellite on the radio, so they'll monitor election results and just kind of let us know how it's going. And so we are appreciative of those fine programs that we're able to have because of our village and supporting our district. Another just announcement, March eighteenth coming up is our PCEP extravaganza. That is from the six o'clock to seven-thirty in the school athletic facilities for our sports, and in the Salem cafeteria for our clubs and activities. This gives an opportunity for our community, we're really targeting the incoming freshman class to see firsthand the eighty-five-plus activities that they can get involved with at the park. And so we really invite and encourage everyone to come out and see what we're all about. PCEP is a really great facility for educating students, and we want to welcome them there. Trying to think of what else I had here, I think I will yield my time now to our Director of School Safety and Security. I shared with you, board members, this weekend in board notes, the Michigan Public Act 436, which requires us to take a look at our emergency operating plans, and this is that first year that this goes into effect. And so I want to ask our director to talk to you a little bit about this this evening. We're looking at a resolution as a first read, and come back for your consideration in the next couple of weeks.
Good evening, and thank you for having me here this evening. Michigan Act, Public Act 436, I'll get it right, 436 states in part that a school district in conjunction with at least one law enforcement agency that has jurisdiction over the school shall conduct a review of the emergency operations plan. The plan must be approved by the Board of Education and reviewed at least biannually. The Plymouth Canton Community Schools Emergency Operations Plan was developed in conjunction with Canton Township, including police, fire, and emergency management, Plymouth Township, including police and fire, and the City of Plymouth Police Department. The plan was also approved by the Wayne County Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. The plan includes all the required areas mandated by the State of Michigan law, and the mandated areas are school violence and attacks, threats of school violence and attacks, bomb threats, fire, weather-related emergencies, intruders, parent and pupil reunification, threats to school-sponsored activities or events, plan to train teachers, plan to improve building, school building security, active violence protocol, continuity of operations, and a vulnerability assessment. Our plan covers those areas and more, including pandemic crisis, which seems to be the topic of the day, cardiac emergencies, specific plans for athletic events, specific plans for graduation, school maps, floor plans, flood plans, utility failure, a listing of all our personnel assets in the district, a listing of all our vehicle assets in the district, law enforcement command posts for each school, memorandums of understanding for evacuation sites, student counts, master schedules, contact information for key members, and many other areas. We are committed to working with our building administrators to ensure they are familiar with the individual plans for their schools and can work with their teachers and staff to ensure they're comfortable with their responsibility in an emergency. And we are currently working with Canton Township to strengthen our evacuation sites and off-site family reunification plans. When I started seven weeks ago, and it's been a very, it's been a whirlwind, I've used that term. Our emergency operation plan was one binder, and you can see in the seven weeks that I've been here with, reviewing it and getting some of our added areas, we're up to two binders and an addendum binder. And currently working on a plan for students with special needs, so we have an emergency plan for that. So, the plan going forward with the individual schools is that I've pledged to each of the administrators that I've met with, they have a plan for each individual school or get one, it's a little bit less than this. And that we'll go over that plan individually with them so that they're comfortable with the plan and can get that out to their staff at their school buildings, so.
Just because of the sensitive nature, we're not doing that as a PowerPoint presentation, but he does have the plans here, and they would be available before you have to do your final vote for the next couple of weeks if you want to come in and make an appointment to take a look.
Okay. Member Kehoe?
Yeah, so just in terms of distributing these plans, obviously these binders are great to have them in paper copy in case there's not an electronic version. But there's also the challenge where you may not have that binder with you. Do we, like, who in the, as part of this whole process, has copies of those plans so that they can support or act on those things in the event that one of those plans needs to be put into action? Do we have them both paper and electronic?
We, I do have them electronically, I haven't shared them with anybody yet because we're not done with it.
Right.
But once that's done, then we can have a discussion about who should get that, certainly core team should be able to have that. The building administrators should be able to see their plans online too, I would imagine.
And so I suggest that we probably, if we're gonna take that kind of process, we'd want to have it both online as well as a local copy, because you never know what kind of infrastructure might be disrupted and need to have the plan. So I'm really excited, the depth that you guys are going into this, and I appreciate you sharing the program that you've got.
Thank you. Member Berninski?
So I'm sorry for bringing this up, but I heard you just say that they're not quite finished yet. And so will they be finished before we do a final reading?
This is finished, and by not being finished, I mean, I don't want to share with them until it's been approved by the board, so.
Thank you for clarifying that, yeah.
It is always in a state of evaluation, but this is what we have, and once approval is done, then we'll share it with them and get the training that they need.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, comments? Thank you for your work, this is really important.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is teaching and learning, Beth, with math update.
Yep, so I'm gonna invite Dr. Deirdre Brady, our Director of Curriculum and Professional Development, and Kathy Williams, who is our curriculum coordinator for K-12 math, and what's known as VAPA, Visual and Performing Arts, to come and share with you an update on K-12 math.
Good evening, everyone, we've spent a lot of time together the last few weeks, and I'm back to talk about math this evening. It's been about a year since we've updated you on what's happening in K-12 math, and there's been a lot of work that's been done, especially at the elementary level. So tonight Kathy and I are here to update you so that you know all the work that's happening. So to remind you for math specifically, we have coaches, my team consists of four curriculum coordinators, Kathy is one of them. She leads the work with our math teachers, the math curriculum groups. And then we also have coaches who support the work at the high school level. We specifically have two point-two coaches who work with colleagues at the park. And then we also have three full-time instructional coaches who also support the work for math. As I've shared before, the work that we do falls directly within strategic objective number three, which is by the end of the 2021, '22 school year, we will develop and consistently implement a pre-K through 12th grade vertically-aligned, standard-based curriculum and assessments in all areas. I know you've heard me say it probably forty times, but that is the work we're doing to make sure our students have what they need. Inside of the curriculum cycle, math sits in several different areas. So whereas when, the last thing that I brought before you was science, it had more alignment and I believe one error. Math is not in that same place, and so there's some reasons why. We offer many, many math courses at the high school, that's one piece. The second piece is each of our different levels needed some different amounts of time to roll pieces out. So algebra, which actually is the furthest along in our high school, along with our 6-8 math, they're all in the implementing phase. But other contents are sitting in different places. So our Algebra III and our pre-cal classes, they're, we're sitting in the review and planning stages, and so they will begin work next year, actually the revising and the developing, they're not quite there yet. There's a lot of revising and developing work that's happening in Algebra II this year, and also the K-5 math. A lot of our time this evening is going to be spent talking about K-5 math, because that does affect a good chunk of our students and about three hundred teachers. So we're gonna, we're gonna spend a good amount of time there. So this evening Kathy's here for the first time last year. Tanya McCrayne was overseeing math and science, and this year we're lucky to have each of our core contents have somebody who's dedicated to that work. So I'm gonna ask Kathy to come on up and talk about the specifics that are happening in each of our levels.
Thank you. So I'm really excited to be here to share the great work that teachers and coaches and various curriculum staff have been doing this year to better and ready our curriculum for students. And I'd like to first start with the lens that we use for our work, and you see it up there on the board. Through building a viable curriculum and engaging strategies, PCCS will grow mathematicians who have a growth mindset to think critically, creatively, problem-solve, and justify solutions. This lens or philosophy has grown out of the research we've done and the work that we've done. In the past, we found that perhaps our focus was a little bit too narrow. And many of our school improvement plans start with a goal that say, students will be proficient in math. And then the strategies kind of define what proficiency looks like. And a lot of times strategy, strategies will focus on computational skills, which are very important. But that was a focus fifty years ago, that was a focus that we need to update. And so we really thought about, what is a mathematician, how do we build a mathematician? And we found that at an early age, students begin to view themselves as or as not math-minded. And so the broader we can have our lens, the more students we can capture and change that mindset to where all students are mathematicians. So we're gonna start off by looking at the work that the high school algebra team has done. As Dr. Brady said, they have really pioneered the way for this work. And they have been redefining what our curriculum looks like. Now, you might think, well, math really hasn't changed, and that's correct, we're learning the same formulas. Our children are learning the same formulas that we learned and that perhaps our own parents have learned. And so the math has not changed that much, but the way we engage students in mathematical thinking has changed a lot. And also the depth at which we take students to think critically and to problem-solve has changed a lot. And so that is the change in the curriculum. So it's also the change in the teaching strategies people are using in the classroom, and it's also the change in the assessments that they're making. Because if we are teaching at a much deeper level, we want to measure if students are reaching that deeper level. And so our assessments look different as well. So you see at the bottom of the slide here that there is a rubric, and this is straight off of one of the assessments. And because we are no longer just measuring if students can do the computation, we need a way to grade the assessment that fully captures a student's understanding. And so you'll see here, the first two boxes talk about a student solving the equation accurately. And then the third box is talking about how the student is able to accurately explain the difference between their solutions. And so that is the piece that really captures the depth at which we take students now. You'll also see under that, there's a section for student reflection. Now, students reflect on selected items that the team chooses. So they'll take a look at the data from the assessment, and they will decide which questions they want the students to reflect on. Typically, it's two questions per exam. And the more we can get students to reflect on their thinking, thinking about their thinking, otherwise known as metacognition, the more it solidifies their understanding. And if they weren't able to fully comprehend that standard, it gives them an opportunity to polish it up before we move on. So it's really beneficial that two of our part-time coaches happen to be on this algebra team. As I said earlier, that they've pioneered the way, and so they are able to use the expertise of this process to bring it to the other teachers through their coaching responsibilities. So Geometry Honors Geometry, they are rolling out their revised unit this year, and also their revised assessments and the rubrics for assessing how well students have learned. And they are, for the most part, using their data to focus on their instructional practice. Again, it's how we engage students in the mathematical thinking that is really going to deepen their understanding. The same is true for Algebra II classes. They are currently changing how they teach their units, so they're changing that content and their assessments so that next year they're ready for full rollout and can make those changes real-time. So what is all this talk about the new way we're engaging students? Well, at the elementary level, I can tell you it was referred as bottoms-up heads together. We no longer want students to be the empty vessels that are sitting kind of constant in their seat, and the teachers are trying to fill them up, that's one perspective. And we want a more culturally responsive way for students to learn. And so these student engagement strategies, such as Kagan Strategies or Cultures of Thinking routines, it really puts students at the center of the thinking and the learning. And so that picture icon shows that there's several different setups to set up your room. So when you walk into a math class, we're hoping that you don't see traditional rows, but that you see students, their bottoms are up off their seat, and their heads are together, and they are talking about math, and they're problem-solving together. And they are asking each other about, I don't understand how you got that, how did you come to that conclusion? So it is a community that is really encouraging students to engage in a social way, which is what we heard earlier from the Plymouth team. How do we engage students authentically in the classroom with their peers? And this is one way that is going to increase that number. One of the examples I saw during instructional rounds that I participated in was multiple points of engagement. And as students entered the room, there was an excitement, and they said, oh, are we gonna get to do the MPE today? And they were really looking forward to it. And what that is, is kind of an icebreaker, as students walk in the room, and the teacher has already put down several different levels of problems that students can choose to solve. There, you're hearing choice again. And so they can choose to solve all of them, they can choose- And so they can choose to solve all of them, they can choose to solve one of them, but they are responsible to give their best effort to at least one of the problems. And then after that time, they are also responsible to be, to be student leaders and to share their problem-solving process, how they solve the problem with other students. Other students are then encouraged to ask questions, to validate their thinking. And so it really becomes this math talk community. Also at the high school level, there's a unique opportunity for coaching to happen every day. Having that point two, two coaches at the high school campus, those coaches are available one hour every day for their colleagues. And this is really important because it provides that job embedded professional development on a daily basis. Research shows that when you're able to do that, particularly through a coach, it provides a non-threatening, non-evaluative way for teachers to really look at their practice and consider what they need to change and how they can grow. One of the venues that coaches use is something called instructional rounds. And we're able to do that twice this year. And it provides floater subs to release teachers from their classroom to come observe a coach or another teacher who's volunteered as a way for them to observe these new engaging strategies in place, happening real time with real students. Afterwards, there's time for those teachers to have conversation and plan, how am I going to implement that in my lesson tomorrow, next week, next unit? So it really provides an authentic way for teachers to talk about their practice and grow. So where did all of this idea for engagement strategies come from? It is Common Core. So in the Common Core, we have the eight mathematical practices. And those are changing the way we teach and the way students learn. And so if you just take a peek up there, I won't spend too much time talking about each one of them, but you'll see number one makes sense of problems and persevering and solving them. That part of persevering is so important because so many times we see a student struggle and give up. And we need to teach students how to have productive struggle and find the right level for them to be struggling at so they can work through it and be successful. A lot of the venue to help them persevere through a problem is to be teaching them there's various ways to solve problems. And we have different learners who have different ways that work best for them. So whether building a model works best, or drawing a picture, or going straight to calculations, we wanna honor and validate all of those methodologies so that all students feel like they are mathematicians and that their method works for them. As they develop the knowledge and confidence, they're going to be able to, as number five says, use appropriate tools strategically. So if they have a large mathematical problem, they might not wanna sit and draw out 5,432 dots. So that might not be the most strategic way. But hopefully in using those models at an early age, they learn enough mathematics that they can use a more sophisticated tool at that point. One of my favorites is number three, construct viable arguments and critique the reasoning of others. We're creating safe environments where students can critique or ask each other questions and have their thinking validated and also be able to learn and grow from other perspectives. So that really creates a content area that is much more culturally responsive and inclusive to how all students learn math. So we're gonna see these same philosophies as we move to the middle school. When we talk about viable curriculum, we wanna provide learning that challenges all students appropriately. And it's at the middle school level that we really begin to differentiate math learning for students. We assess all fifth graders to see who is ready for a challenge in math. And historically, the way we did that is we had them skip sixth grade math. They were definitely ready for a challenge, but our data showed that then those students were missing some important content. And so we revised the way that we did that and came up with a course that accelerated them through all three years of content, but in two years. And so this year, we have a full rollout of what we're calling the six, seven math class, which means they learn all of sixth grade content and half of seventh grade content. We're piloting the seven, eight course this year, so full rollout for that will be next year. So those children in the six, seven class will move into the seven, eight class next year. The traditional classes for six, seven and eight math are redefining their assessments, much like the high school as I described, so that they are asking questions deeper in knowledge and measuring those accordingly. And lastly, they are also focusing on instructional practices and have been involved with professional development, for example, the Kagan Strategies. This year, we're really taking a look at support or intervention for math at the middle school level. As you know, in the past couple of years, you have approved some increased FTE to add math support classes. And we are finding that we can refine that a little bit. That some of the students who are in semester-long classes or year-long classes might not need that level of support. And so we're beginning to really take a look at how we identify students and building a tiered approach where students can move in and out of intervention as they really need it. And so those students who need a full year of intervention to close the gaps that have been built over the time, we certainly want them to have that opportunity. But those students who only need perhaps eight to 10 weeks of support, that we're giving that to them and releasing them and giving, allowing them some other experiences. So we are taking a look at what resources are at all five buildings. And we're finding that it's a little inconsistent. So we want to streamline that so that all students are exposed to a viable curriculum that supports their needs and for as, as long as they need it. So those are the things that we're working on and hope to continue to refine as we move forward. So the elementary curriculum. So this curriculum and resources, depending on the grade level, can date back as long as 2004. There's many reasons for that. We don't have to spend time on that. What we are spending our time on is really looking at how to propel this work in a very timely manner so that beginning in our earliest stages, students are building that conceptual understanding and ready for more math. And this is super exciting because as I share the work that is happening with our pilot programs, whichever one we recommend and would like to move forward with, it's good stuff. It's amazing. And just using a different resource, I'll get into how, it's such a full program that it's going to be able to prevent those gaps from happening at an early age. So I was telling the middle school teachers, just wait. Just wait till you get these students who, you know, have been exposed to this new curriculum. And when we're able to adopt and all students have it, I really believe that it's going to build a great foundation for mathematical learning. So we are looking, of course, to build a viable curriculum for all students based on the Common Core state standards. We're looking to build a mathematical mindset. We're looking to engage students in those eight mathematical practices. And of course, to be culturally responsive so that all students are engaged in math. I'm passionate about that because as you, if you Google mathematician, you're going to see all those pictures on the left. And as you scroll down, then you begin to see a more broader perspective of what a mathematician looks like. So historically, mathematicians are more well-known as men. And so all the work that we're doing with girls in STEM, I think I heard we have a really great number of female students participating in the STEM program that's coming up, I believe this weekend or next weekend. So we want, we wanna change that mindset. We wanna change that formula. And if you look at the pictures on the right, you'll see a student leader as young as kindergarten or first grade, sharing how she solves problems with her classmates. And the larger picture there on the right, I was scrambling to get my camera to capture this moment because the teacher is posing questions. Everyone had at least one hand up, everyone. Which told me everyone felt that they had something to contribute. And you'll see most of those kids have two hands up. Like, me, pick me, pick me. And that's the kind of passion that we wanna build for our students when it comes to all learning, but particularly math. So we're looking to change that model through the flipped model, as you might think of it. Traditionally, teachers took students as I, we, you. So the teacher first, then the students copy, then the students independent. And really, this flipped model has students engaged right from the start. It has the you try first, then we, teacher helps facilitate, engage, understanding. And then the teacher is then summing up what the students together have come together to conclude with their math session. So I have a quote from Elena Graywall, who is the former head of data science in Airbnb. And she said, when we think about computer science or math, the images that most people have in their heads are not women and they're not people of color. So this is an opportunity to reset. How can we ensure that everyone is included in this new field and feels like they can master these concepts? Little bit about our pilot programs. The elementary math committee took a look at several resources and narrowed it down to two that they really wanted to pilot and give a try. And what we were looking for is a resource that fully supports the Common Core, that builds that math talk community, that really engages students in critical thinking, and also has support for teachers to provide differentiation. So we've been piloting math expressions by Hope Mifflin-Harkort and Envision by Pearson. We have 127 elementary teachers piloting and about half in each pilot. So when I have visited the classrooms, I am seeing this math talk community in action. I am seeing a deeper level of learning. I am seeing students involved in solving, students involved in explaining, questioning, and justifying their thinking. And so there's evidence early on in our pilot that either of these resources support this important work. When I walk in these classrooms and when you visit as well, I'm expecting that you will see what I saw and you will see student leaders on a regular basis. Students leading the instruction at the front of the room, as you see here. And I'm going to share a short video with you of one of those student leaders. It happens to be a fifth grade classroom at Galamore, so a fifth grade talented and gifted class. What you're going to hear briefly before the student talks is the teacher asking the class, what vocabulary is important for the student to use when they're solving the problem? So the class is sharing the vocabulary the student should use. And then you'll hear the student go on to use that vocabulary in solving his problem.
Variable.
Variable. Yep. Term, okay. I don't know if it's necessary, but we'll go with it. One more, arroge. Multiply, alright, go ahead.
So three X, which is basically the coefficient three times the variable X. So you have, and then we have to multiply that by seven to get the product of 21 X. Because we have to multiply coefficient three times seven, which is 21. But since there's an X, the variable X, we have to keep the variable X here.
Thank you. Alright, so what I like to use, use the
So you hear the student using the terms coefficient, variable, product. And so it's just really exciting, even the younger students, you will hear them using that vocabulary. Both pilot programs, resources have built-in ways teachers can provide differentiation instruction for students. They have leveled assignments for every unit, for every lesson. So there's the below level, the on level and the above level that teachers can provide on a daily basis for students. There's also some leveled games, there's leveled center activities, there's online self-adjusting programs and self-pacing games. So there really is quite a plethora of resources that teachers can use to make sure that each student has a curriculum that is going to be providing them success. So how are we going to make our decision? It's a very good question and it's gonna be a very difficult decision because we've really picked two quality resources for our pilot. So we are using the Equip survey, which is a standardized survey to provide a unbiased look at measuring the material itself. We've done teacher surveys to measure how the program has increased the teacher's ability to, to provide engaging lessons, to increase the amount of math talk in their classroom and so forth. And we've also done parent surveys to say, parents, what are you thinking with these programs? What do you think about the homework level? How does your student behave differently, if they do or not? And as I pushed into classrooms, just kind of brief qualitative student interviews, tell me, what do you think how you're, about how you're learning math? And it was really telling to talk with students about it, so I wanna share two quick quotes. I know it's getting late. But the one student, she said, I used to think I was above everyone else, that I should be in the next math class. She said now, her words, it's awesome. She said, now I feel satisfied and accomplished. This is a fourth grader. Another student I asked, a third grader, said, math has always been hard for me because I don't understand the words. But I'm learning the words this year and so math is so much easier. So I thought those were two really cool quotes to capture. Because when we're thinking about a viable for curriculum for all students, we heard from a student who is ready for a challenge and we heard from a student who is an EL student who needs that right amount of productive struggle to build their, their skills appropriately. So our next steps briefly. At the high school, we are going to continue those instructional rounds. We're gonna continue the coaching supports so that we can expand that student engagement strategy piece. And we're already moving that work into the PLCs that happen on a monthly basis. So I really feel that this work is going to increase exponentially because there is a greater amount of teachers being, participating in these coaching opportunities and instructional rounds. And we've heard from principals at both the middle school, well, really all levels, that the coaches do amazing things with teachers and teachers And teachers are really open. There's that trust there. Coaches are teachers, teaching teachers. And there's a high level of trust, so powerful things are happening. At the middle school, we're going to provide some instructional round opportunities for teachers and really work to finalize the tiered approach for math support. At the elementary level, we're making that decision. We have postponed it now three times to collect more data, but we're going to make that decision next week, next Thursday. And then, we're going to present to you all our conclusions. And, once approved, we are going to start planning how we're going to be providing training to teachers and rolling out that new curriculum. Thank you, that was a lot of information. So, thank you, and questions or comments?
Questions? Remember Lazarwitz?
Hi, what kind of support are you offering for students that are struggling in math?
At the elementary level, it differs by building. And I could say it differs at the middle school level as well. It differs by building, and here's why. The resources are different at the elementary level. Some schools provide differentiation right in the classroom. Other schools have support such as Title I or 31A where they are able to provide additional layers of support. And so, four of the schools have a part-time math support person. And one of the, excuse me, one of the schools provides parapros to support during the math session for the grade levels. And so, it differs. And then, at the middle school level, they all have math support, but it might look a little bit differently at each building. So that's why we're trying to streamline that process.
So there is support, you guys? Okay, and then, you, how many schools do you go to in a week to offer support? You go out to the schools?
So, the coaches and I will both push out to the schools. So, the coaches from the Tanger Center will push out pretty much on a daily basis, whether supporting math, science, reading. And the coaches who are for secondary support both the middle school and the high school. And they also are pushing out on a daily basis. And they support all content areas, so it's not every day that they might be supporting math because there's four content areas that they do support. And then myself, I get out, not as much as they do, but probably several times a week. I have been at every school. Not in every single classroom, but mostly in the classrooms that are piloting.
Alright, thank you.
Others? Remember Kehoe?
I'm sorry, remember McCoyn had questions?
Oh, go ahead, remember McCoyn?
So, when you were talking about the high school, and you have the point two coaches, how are the teachers accessing those coaches? I mean, are their preps lining up with those when they have availability, or?
Yes and yes. And there's, and Dr. Brady can maybe share a little bit more, but that's why those instructional round days are so important because it allows the opportunity to release teachers who, whose preps might not normally line up with the coaching staff's timeframe. The coaches also use their own preps to offer up coaching opportunities. So really, it winds up being two hours a day because they love that work and they want to be supporting their colleagues.
The coaches have different times when they coach, to begin with. So we have two point twos. They do not do it on the same hour. And then, we don't ask them to use their prep, just to clarify. We don't ask them to do that, but sometimes if they have somebody and their prep is, let's say, second hour, and they have somebody who wants support during second hour, they will, they will do their coaching during prep and then prep during coaching. That happens often. And then additionally, both of them happen to have either their prep or their coaching time across the lunches. So every single teacher has access to them during their lunchtime as well.
Then, I was, I had a question about, how are you including the instruction for diverse mathematicians? Because it said on one of the slides, oh, where it says culturally responsive, it says include instruction on diverse mathematicians. And I'm wondering how that is rolled out?
So, that's, that is something that would be, hasn't been rolled out yet. So, any resource that you look at does not have that included as part of what they do because that's not part of the state standards. But knowing, as Kathy shared, I think, in depth, is that that's important to us, that students see themselves in what they do. So that would be us creating that to weave in. So, for example, we have many ladies, many women, who worked to help NASA get some things off the ground. And they have not been a part of history, or that their story has not necessarily been told. All the work that was done to do the calculations were done by women, specifically women of color. And so those are some of the pieces that we can weave into the curriculum. That's not going to be something that's in a resource. That, that's, the resource sticks to the facts of the math. So that's work that the curriculum team, Kathy and I, would be doing to ensure that occurs.
And then, my last question is about how well the elementary math programs that you're piloting, how well they align to the middle schools?
So, they align by the standards because we're making sure that the standards cohesive, so are cohesive. So we're not relying on a resource to be the reason that something's aligned because that's a resource. We're making sure that the instructional practices, standards are being taught, instructional practices are consistent, cohesively. So, the current resource that we're using at the middle school, their elementary version is not one of the ones that we decided to pilot for a variety of reasons, that we picked the two that we picked. So our alignment will be, to be sure that the standards are taught, that there is cohesiveness. And then, one of the things, again, going back to what Kathy had talked about with instructional practices in sixth grade, making sure we have that continuity so it's all the way through. The math that we currently have rolled out before the curriculum cycle process started, so we're making sure that we go back and fill anything that we need to fill.
Okay, remember Kehoe?
So, just making sure I understand the concept of pilot. Sometimes pilots are selective. It sounds like this pilot is across all elementaries. We just have divided it up. Half are doing one textbook and the other half are doing the other.
That is correct.
Okay, great.
We're making sure that we have all schools involved.
Great, and we're going to pick a winner this, this year?
Yes. That's the, not this week. Next week.
And then, so what do we do to get the, obviously, half the teachers will be, have the material that they use and they'll be using that. How do we get the other half of those teachers up to speed with this new program? Because next year, it's going to be switching over.
Correct, yeah, go ahead. And it's more than half because we have some teachers who weren't piloting at all. So we have about 300 teachers total. We have about 120 who are piloting. So we have, we need to work with all teachers for next year.
So it's, okay, so just to make sure that, maybe I misspoke. It's not 100% of the elementary math that is using these new things. It's only 127 of the 300. But we've hit all grade levels. And are we hitting all schools? Okay, got it.
So, both resources are available, seven to 10 days from the time we place our order. And so, we are hoping that timeline works out to where we put in the order and we have the materials in teachers' hands before they leave for summer. Also, there's plans for voluntary but paid summer professional development, as well as back-to-school fall professional development. There will be professional development on both the actual resource components, as well as professional development on these best practices we've been talking about for the eight mathematical principles and student engagement strategies. There are days planned where myself and the coaches will push into every building on a monthly basis. We will be in the building one full day to do that job-embedded professional development and support.
I've got other questions, but somebody else has? Okay, so my next question is, is on the, it took us a long time to get our six, seven math program going. We've been talking about this for three or four years. Can you give us some feedback on how that program is working?
Sure, absolutely. So, the data is coming in, but we are finding that teacher feedback feels that the gaps we were once concerned about, we will not be concerned about. And they really feel that as those students move into the honors algebra class, that they will be prepared to have success right off the bat.
Okay, great. And then my last question was, the coaching support that we have at the instructional coaching support that we have at the high school. Right now, we're, I believe that we're just rolling out the new algebra, as well as the new geometry programs. But next year, we're going to be rolling out the Algebra II, Trig and Precalc, et cetera. Is that going to be enough cycles for only point two? To support all of those different programs?
We have point two just in math. We have two point twos in math, and then we have a point two in each of the other content areas. But we also have full-time coaches who will be supporting. So for example, Deb Stevens, who taught science for many years in our district, is a secondary coach. Our science that is rolling out next year, she will work with our point two coach at the park to make sure that the new courses are supported fully. She will spend a good amount of her time at the high school as well. So we're using a blend of our point twos and our full-time coaches to support the high school.
Okay, so you said that was for science, though?
That, I gave an example specifically of science. Our ELA does not have anything new rolling out for next year. We rolled out ninth and 10th grade this year. And Evan, who is our point two coach, is supporting that work along with other coaches. Huania, for example, is doing a lot of work, one of my other coaches, with ELA. Right, and Lori, yeah, and Lori. Then, in social studies, we are rolling out new-
I'm mostly just worried about the math program to make sure that, because that we, it sounds like we only have two point twos in math, but they're going to be rolling out three, three, four new programs next year?
They're not. They're rolling out Algebra II next year, which is the only one that's brand-new. Algebra's already been rolled out. We're in, next year will be year three of Algebra. Geometry is rolled out this year. Next year will be, it's year two. And the brand-new rollout for math next year will be Algebra II. There are multiple Algebra II courses to align. It's not three separate components or three different grades. Our students have three different options for Algebra II, which course they would like to take.
Got it.
So it's one new kind of course that's rolling out.
So I look at this year, it's showing that Algebra III, Precalc, honors Precalc are in the reviewing and planning phases. So they would go into, okay, I see, they're going into revising.
They're not rolling anything out, exactly. So really, phase one is Kathy and I starting the conversation to say, "What do we have? What's going on?"
Yeah, they don't go into rollout until-
They're not going to roll out for at least two years from now.
I misread the-
Yeah, no, it's okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Remember Brooks?
Yeah, I just have a question about, when you talked about the kids having a situation and they have to figure out, and I'm just wondering where the tools come from that they get to solve the problems? Is there literature, or there are books, or what's in the program that helps? Because normally, you know, when you solve a problem, you say, "Okay, I think I'll use this tool to solve this problem." So do these kids actually, they, do they memorize the tools? Or do they have reference books to get the tools at the time?
So tools, think more broadly with tools. Tools can be calculators, tools can be Lax, tools can be their resource book. Tools can be their brain, tools could be another person. Yeah, a number chart. It's a, it's a wide range of things. And what we want students, instead of us saying, "You probably need a number chart for that," we want students to kind of work through what is the best tool to use at that time. So there's a variety of things inside of classrooms that would be like an area. Some of our pilot teachers have like math toolkit area. And they have a variety of resources that students can use. Rulers would be a tool, for example, protractors.
I was thinking more of tools, meaning adding, subtracting, multiplying, dividing, using-
So those concepts-
Different types of formulas to solve problems.
Those concepts would be taught. And then, say after they're taught, when they come in the next day, they're presented with this problem, that they are applying the knowledge that they learn to do the problem-solving and then leading the discussion of how they solve the problem. And so, for example, if they're learning multiplication, there are several different tools that they can use to be able to solve a multiplication problem. So for example, they might use a hundred chart. They might use a grid. They might use some manipulatives where they're, they're building tens and then creating a matrix. And so, those materials should always be available. They shouldn't be in cupboards, but they should be in bins so that every student would see the problem they need to solve, decide what tool is most effective for them to solve it, grab that tool, do the thinking, do the solving, and then share out with a partner, or a small group, or whole group, "Here's how I solve the problem." And then, another student would say, "Well, here's how I solve the problem." And another student would say, "Here's how I solve the problem." And all methods are valid. And then, as the class becomes more efficient with multiplication, they would decide which tool is the most effective and efficient way to move forward with multiplication. So it's building that conceptual, that concrete understanding and making sure that I'm just not memorizing my multiplication chart. I'm understanding how I build that answer. And then, how, once I become proficient in my understanding, how am I going to get the answer each time after that?
Okay, the, I get a question on the, where, I can make phrases. The types of problems that you come up with for them to solve, are they problems that are going to be presented later in math, like in college, or like in physics? There's a lot of examples that use math to solve these problems. Are they, are they the real-life type of problem-solving that they're looking for?
You need carpet for your bedroom and you know your bedroom is 10 by 13. How do you know how much carpet that you need?
So, you're prepping them for a college-type of course?
Absolutely, yes.
Kindergartners don't start at that level, though. So obviously, so we make sure that they, they start with being comfortable with math and being able to know what those tools are and when to use them. And then every year, layers going back to kind of what member McCoyn was asking, how do we make sure that there's that continuity? Because we want them to build so that they can handle those real-life things. It starts quite young, though. It does start quite young, that we start with very simple kinds of application-based approaches. Yeah, absolutely.
Because when I remember, when I took, we, you know, you'd figure out how big your garden's-
Exactly.
But when I was in college, it's like the physics end that really gave us a lot of examples on, you know, how to use it, you know? And a lot of times, the students got the problem wrong at the end because their basic math was wrong.
Correct.
But they understand the concepts.
And what we want to do is ensure that our programming has really strong number sense in the lower elementary because those kinds of issues that occur later on is lack of foundational number sense understanding. And that's what we really want to make sure we build into our curriculum.
Okay, so the basics of this are, is it, is there an effusence on memorizing or knowing where to look up the references?
Yes and yes. Yes and yes, both.
Because you still need to learn, like, "Okay, I have this problem, but I need, you know, a reference book to look up to see which solution I need."
So rather than telling students, "This is the formula, memorize it," which was more my personal experience as a child. We, yes, we want them to get to knowing what the formula for volume is. But can we do that through a way that builds their understanding in a hands-on approach, so it's not just pure memorization? It's fully, really, like Kathy had said, really understanding what volume means.
Yeah, because I had a, I had a professor in college that said, "You can, like, have an open book test where you know the form, you see the formulas, but you not have, you have to know how to use the formula and learn how to use the formula." So, I'm just wondering if you're, if that's involved with these programs?
Yes, it is.
One more, remember Lazarwitz?
Yeah, sorry, I wrote down MP3. Can you explain that to me?
So, it was MPE, very close.
It's horrible.
Yes, MPE. Multiple points of-
Thank you. I'm just trying to figure out.
And so that allows each student to enter in and be engaged in the lesson at the level that they're at with the concept.
Okay, so MPE.
Yes.
Horrible, thank you.
Multiple entry points, MEP. MEP.
I won't forget that, thank you.
I know we threw a lot of questions at-
I know we threw a lot of questions at you, and just really briefly, if you could just talk about the pilot and the assessment that you're using with that pilot. So, with one resource, or one program in a building, so let's just say one building, do you have a control group, experimental group with one program, and the same thing with another program?
We do. So, we have, the other of the 300 teachers that are not piloting are using the resources that we've been using. That's, that's what we've been doing. And then, we have every grade level represented for each of the different pilot materials, all buildings represented, so we make sure that we have a full glance at what's happening. Kathy and I, we have a date on Friday morning to start looking at NWA data. We have a, to, just to make sure that we're looking at all aspects, absolutely.
Thank you. All right, thanks for the thorough work.
Sorry, we went a little long on an important night.
It's clearly exciting work, so, yes, thank you.
Beth, continue with the next part.
Yep, so the next thing that's for your consideration is a resolution to purchase a district firewall. So, I'm going to ask Mark to come up and answer any questions you might have, as it's more his area of expertise than mine. So, Mark Salzer, Director of Integrated Technology Systems.
There are any questions, happy to take them.
So, Mark, I looked at the proposal, and we'd seen this in the board notes as well. This says that the filtering functionality is expiring in May of 2020.
Correct.
Does that mean you can't add new filters? Does that mean the filters that we have don't work? What does that mean?
So, we purchased a subscription, a five-year subscription to the filtering system. So, the firewall we currently have, and typically, the newer firewalls, they're called next-generation firewalls. They're actually both a firewall, which is a barrier that helps you negotiate between your internal network and the external, and they also help you filter, you know, according to category. So, the filter licensing that we have expires in May, and the voluntary alternate, if you looked at the base bid, you might not have recognized it, but that, there is a voluntary alternate that we could have chosen for 14,000 change to renew just the licensing. That was, that's an annualized price, keeping the same firewall appliance, and just then renewing access to the filtering. It's, basically, it's a collection of, literally, I think they have around 45 million individual web ratings against a couple of billion web pages. And so, we, we can use those and do, basically, we want this category and that category taken care of. But in May, we, we will no longer have access. Middle of May, we won't have access to that list, and so, that aspect of the appliance will stop working. So, we need to, we, we knew we were going to need to do something. Either renew just that license access, or go out and get an outright new box, new appliance, that would have in, inside of it, the also, the, you know, access to the same filtering service if we used their, you know, the Fortigate. If we'd gone with Cisco, we'd use theirs.
So, I guess, I want to make sure I understand what the mode of failure is in May. Does that mean that those filters stop working, or you just can't add new ones?
They stop working. We, we need to do something in May.
Right, okay. So, then, my second question, second question on this is, if, we have this set up as a first and a second reading. If you get the approval for this in the second meeting of the month, do you have enough time to deploy, train, and have this done before those filters stop working?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not in, I, I definitely need the second reading, but I don't, I'm not in a rush tonight. I'm happy if we have something happen, second reading.
Perfect. That, that's what I was worried about, because I just, it's a short timeframe, and those filters are super important. So, if you've got enough time, then I'm, I'm great. I'd rather follow the normal process.
Yep. So, the integrator that would be doing the, the work, they did the work the last time, and they're called Delta Network Services, and they, we've already had a conversation. We, we know their lead time. I'm feeling very comfortable. We would do the work in the, probably the April break. So, if, if all goes well, they'll have a PO, and they're, they're good to go.
Perfect. Okay, and then the last question is, don't we have multi-entry points into the, the network? Do we need more than one firewall?
So, well, we, we were, we have multiple entry points into our network. The firewall, everything comes into the firewall. So, there's 131,000 ports that are evaluated by a firewall, 65,000 TCB, well, it doesn't matter, but a lot. They all come into the one. But what we did consider this, so we've, we went out to bid a year ago, and so, for, for this. And we, we were waiting to see if there's anything new on the market. What we were deliberating over was potentially, if there would be a new model in any of the manufacturers that were available. So, we talked with Fortinet, we talked with Cisco, others. We saw some new models, but nothing that was compelling. And then, we did consider, as you're asking about, possibly, do we have either multiple entry points? Well, they all come into one, but what we also considered was high availability, HA, to have a seamless fallback if something went bad. But we actually have some other plans for that. So, we don't have, we, we're all set.
Okay. I'm just making sure, because I, I know that we've got a secondary data center
Yep.
at, at work, I'm sorry, at Liberty.
Liberty.
But we don't have a secondary firewall there, correct?
Correct, yeah. So, we're, we're exploring, Dan, who you met earlier tonight, we're already having a conversation about what we'll do for, if, in the, in the unlikely but possible for recovery. And so, we're, we're feeling we're going to have at Liberty what we need to be able to back, be back in operation. It might not be seamless, but to go and have a second firewall, the cost would be another $100,000. And we saw that we have next business day for this current appliance that we're going to be getting, and we think we can really have the window very short. So, we, we don't think that we're going to have very much downtime, if anything, if we needed to spin something up very quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Member Lazarwitz?
What's the total cost on this?
It'll be $95,000 and change, and the, the federal government will cover about $18,000 of that. I think the, I don't have the exact.
So, it's like 77,000?
Yeah, the exact number is 95,980 total. The federal government would cover $18,590.40. So, the district, then, we would be looking at $77,389.60.
How long does this last, this?
Five years.
Five years?
Yep, $16,000 a year, will be our average.
Five years, well.
We'll, we'll be back here.
You're looking at it again?
Yep.
And, I'm sorry, one last question.
No, that's okay.
Warranty, what's the warranty on this?
It's 24/7, so 24 hours a day, seven days a week, next business day for anything. They send to you before they get the, the appliance back. So, when we have a problem, we call, they send something. And we also have worked with Delta before. So, we, we have some confidence that we can have quick support, and actually, it's assured.
Actually, I have one more question.
Hang on, are you done?
I am done. Thank you so much. Thank you.
So, I noticed in the bids that we've got, there's only one bid for the Fortinet. All the other bids are for different vendors as part of the process, with the exception of Inocomp and Marco, that both bid Cisco. Did we bid the capacity, the capability that we were looking for, and then they returned a specific vendor solution?
So, E-Rate doesn't allow you to specify. You can say, or like. So, we, we went, we had actually two requests for base bid, a high-end and a mid-range. And then, we said, this is what we're using now, but we're looking for like, like alternatives. So, we, and then, we also would accept if somebody said, hey, can I, can I bid a Sonic, or can I bid this, you know, Palo Alto. So, we, we had two choices. They were both higher capacity than our current Fortigate that we have.
Okay. And we're happy with the Fortigate and the Fortinet products. I mean, our teams use them.
Yep.
They've worked well for us. So, this is, that's why you're making the recommendation for this. Not only is it the most economical, but it's also the, the right equipment for us.
It is. It is. I mean, the, the, my only little regret is Cisco does have a very nice client called Umbrella that you can use on individual devices that we, we were, you know, intrigued by, but it's not enough to have us go all-in on the appliance. So, this is the, this is the right device for the district.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yep.
Thank you.
You are.
Okay, we are up at letter G, action items in discussion. Real quickly, we know March is reading month, so if any board members are planning on going to read to our kiddos, just send Monica and I an email, letting us know where you're going to be, just so we alert the buildings that you're coming. And it's a fun time, so if you haven't done it yet, it's, it's one of the best things about this job.
Love it.
I know. Next is the EEF sponsorship. I know Heather mentioned that they already have some sponsors. You know, we do it every year, so I'd like to just see if there's any interest to continue that sponsorship from us.
Yes.
Yes? Okay. All right, I'll send out an email, and we'll divvy up the cost. Okay?
We need to do a drawing for the tickets.
Yes.
Because I think it's.
You get four tickets, right?
So, it depends on what level of sponsorship you choose. So, so, certain levels get. So, one level is two tickets, the next level is four, so depending on which level you choose.
So, the one that we always do with four tickets, is that the gold?
Yes.
Gold is $500, and it's four tickets. The bronze is $350, and it has two tickets.
Correct.
So, we've generally done gold. Are you comfortable doing that again?
Yes.
Yes?
Have we done gold or silver?
I thought we did bronze.
No, it was, it was usually, it was the 500 divided.
Whatever the 500.
$500 levels.
So, that's.
I think it's.
I have my paper with me.
I had it, I had it last night, so.
But I can send you the paper, like, we have a paper that tells you exactly what every level is, and what comes with each level, so that you, as the president, can have that, and then.
Silver's 500, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Silver's 500, and includes four event tickets.
Okay, so.
So, there you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I'll shoot you guys an email for the sponsorship, and we'll divvy up the cost, and then we'll do a drawing at the next meeting. Okay, next item, we need to look at our calendars. There, Monica sent out in board notes some dates for our follow-up session with Len for board governance work. So, can we just pull out the calendars real quick, and look at April 21, and May 12, or May 19?
April 21 is not a board meeting week.
Correct.
So, what are the other choices?
So, first one's April 21.
Okay.
The next one is May 12. And the one after that is May 19.
May 12 is a board meeting week?
Yep. So, for that one, we would probably look at doing something after the board meeting. But if we want more time, that's why we're looking at May 19, and April 21 is an option.
The 12, we could also go before the board meeting, like a six to seven.
Oh, we could do before.
I, I don't know what's going to happen with travel. Normally, I travel often, so, although it hasn't been a lot lately. So, I prefer to do things on weeks that I'm already have to be here.
Okay.
So, the 12th would be the best date for me, because then I know that I'm already going to be here for that, that meeting.
I'd rather do the 12th also.
Okay, how's 12th for everyone?
So, it's a late one?
May 12. We can try to do early.
Do it so earlier.
It's hard to.
That's hard for Doug, then.
Well, that's right.
Well, how long do we need for that piece?
We're thinking an hour and a half, so 5:30 to 7:00.
Yeah.
Can you be here by 5:30?
Yeah.
Okay. 5:30 work for everyone?
I'm good, yeah, 5:30 to 7:00. Which day is this?
It is May 12.
May 12.
So, before we lock it down, any other issues with May 12?
Can we get a second choice, just in case that doesn't work, you know?
For Len?
Okay, in case he's given up the day already.
Leonardo, too.
What time did we say?
5:30 to 7:00 for the 12th, right before the board meeting. And I will touch base with Leonardo. I don't know if he'll be ready to come back, but he.
Is there a second date, or is that the date?
So, that's the first date.
May 12, and what was the other dates?
So, the alternate dates that we need to look at are April 21 and May 19. I'm good with either, whatever you guys have available.
They're, they're both available for me now, but I don't know what the heck's going to happen. So.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, so let's do April 21 as a alternate.
Same time?
Same time.
Like 5:30 to 7:00?
5:30 to 7:00.
That'd be perfect.
Okay.
And if you can let us know as soon as possible.
We'll reach out to them tomorrow.
Thank you. Okay, that's it for action item discussion. Let's go through our follow-up board questions. If we, I'm looking at last time, the outstanding items. We're still waiting for the results of the nine students that would be subject to retention under the third-grade reading legislation. And information about the AP physics course and content was discussed at the SPA meeting. And Deirdre, would you mind sharing that physics and, was it the AP physics? Honors physics?
AP and honors physics would be the ones that I'd be.
So, students have a choice of taking regular physics or honors physics.
Right.
And then, they could take the AP physics course after that.
Right. They're going to share some information on what the program is, or?
Well, the AP program is determined by.
Right, but we have two different AP programs that are available in physics. There's a calculus-based AP physics, and then there's also a non-calc-based AP physics. And most universities don't support, don't recognize the non-calculus-based AP physics.
So, we did not discuss that AP, the two different AP. We discussed the physics and honors physics. So, do you guys have an answer for Patrick about the two different AP physics?
The one that we've been doing historically has been the non-calculus-based one. But as we're revamping the physics program, my recommendation was, is that we consider moving to the calculus-based one, because it's, it is a more widely-recognized program for, for students in an AP level.
Okay.
People were considering, were taking the AP physics class instead of regular physics. And now, they'll have a choice with honors physics.
Right.
Where they won't need to do that. And I think that if you're going to offer an AP program, I think you should offer something that's going to be recognized at the university level.
So, both, both of the AP courses are recognized at the college level. Each college, I just looked at it. I, I just looked at the data. So, it varies greatly, it, and it depends very much on what the score is that you get. So, it's more about the score you get than really which course you took. No one's going to take a credit for AP physics if you scored a two, for example, on the test. So, both are recognized. It depends on the university, but, but both, both are recognized. So, the reason that the current AP course is the one that was selected is to ensure that more students have access into that course. The calc-based course would eliminate a good amount of students from being able to take that course, and that's, that was the decision as to why we chose what we chose. We want to make sure that as many kids as possible who want to take AP are able to, and the, the other course would eliminate. We do have students who take the test, AP test. Any student can take an AP test, regardless of if they took the course or not. And so, we do have students who have taken calculus at our high school, and take, have taken our AP physics course, who then choose to take the AP calc-based test. And our pass rate on that is very good as well.
So, I think if we're going to do that, we have to do a better job of educating the community, because right now, the, the teachers, as well as the parents and the students that are taking the existing AP-based class are really discouraged from taking the AP test, because they've said it's essentially useless. They've said that nobody gets credit for that in the kind of universities that they're going to, and so, they've really shied away from taking that, that test. And that's feedback from the teachers, as well as from parents of students that have taken that class. So, if we can change the way we are messaging that, then maybe we can be more successful. But that's not, that's not the feedback that I've heard.
Sure. And so, I'll, I'll work with Tanya to, to make sure, and work with the department on that. I, I just looked at the data from, from different Michigan, especially, I was looking at Michigan schools. They have, they, they put out the parameters of what kind of coursework you would go into if you pass at a certain level on the AP test. And it was for everything, not just physics, but it, it gave every single AP possible course, all the major universities in the state of Michigan, and what they accept, and what you'd be able to go into.
Okay.
Let me tell you the anecdotes that I've heard, so.
Yep, so we'll work on messaging.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for bringing it to us.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any follow-up questions from this meeting? I don't recall any, but, okay, great.
Just those of us who might want to see the emergency operations plan to make, to follow up with Monica to come in.
Thank you. So, Monica, when can they? Thank you. So, Monica, when can they, between now and the next two weeks?
That's right.
Okay, so, contact Monica in the next two weeks if you want to look at the emergency manuals in person. Okay? All right, we are at adjournment. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
And President, make a motion to adjourn?
Second it.
Member, who seconded? Okay. Motion was made by Member Keough, seconded by Member McQuine. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. We are adjourned 9:12.